Moved and approved, approved the agenda as printed and I will give you one. Royce Kenneman should be here about seven thirty and all he's gonna do is introduce the new police officer to us so that you guys all know him. That's all he's gonna do. So I'll interrupt the meeting just briefly and have him introduced and he'll be on his way. Okay?
Okay.
Motion?
I approve the minutes.
Nope.
God, I don't mean minutes, approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and approve, uh moved and seconded to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Approved the minutes from last meeting?
So I have moved and approved the minutes of last meeting.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes from last meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Chris, I'm all caught up on payroll, how about that? Huh? Some prices never cease to amaze you, do they?
Yeah, no.
Bills Francis, you're up?
Yeah. Well, I'm out in front of you, everything looks to be in order.
Any questions for Francis?
Let me look at it a little bit. I looked at it, I can't.
How long do we have to do the garbage truck?
They rebuilt the, uh, back cylinders and the door and all that stuff, so.
The cylinders were about two thousand, a little more than two thousand dollars of that, uh, thirty-five hundred bucks, so.
They did some new, new stuff on it, but new...
Put two new cylinders in it, they put some slides on it, uh, just, just some things that,
Yeah.
you know, everyday wear and tear kinda beats up and so, uh, but the guy, the guy looked at it and he said, "Man, I've ne- I've never seen a truck this old, this clean."
I was gonna say that truck,
So...
uh, Verdi was still in council when I went down with him, we picked it up, it's, we've had it a while, that's about the first time we've really done anything with it.
Yeah, and, and that's kinda what I thought too, so I thought, I was thinking more, you know, more, more than that, so I thought thirty-five hundred was a pretty good deal.
Grosvenor Supplies, Francis?
Yeah.
Uh, let me think of that.
Natural, natural gas.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay.
I was thinking the other one.
Uh, what that is, is, uh, just some, um, supplies for...
That's fine. I just wanted to attach it to somebody.
Yeah, it's basically supplies for, uh...
Oh, he's here early.
Oh, wow, look at you.
You just pointed the guy chief and he just turned his head.
He'll be right along, Royce?
Yeah, uh, Jeremy doesn't come out till about seven thirty, so about then they'll be here.
That's fine.
Okay. Well, I approve, or I move and approve these bills before we have more.
I second.
Yeah, I like that number.
Moved and, uh, been moved and seconded to approve the bills to be paid, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay? Discuss and approve ordinance twenty fifteen oh four. And we went through this last time, this will be the second reading?
Actually, this will be the third reading, Steve.
Is this the third one?
This one will be the third reading, this is the one that we've been doing for, uh,
Quite a while.
This is our third meeting now, yeah, so, uh, so I'll read it one more time and, uh, I'll just read what's changed. Um, now, I'll read the whole thing this time. All utility bills should be paid or mailed and postmarked by the last day of the month in which the billing is issued. Payment shall be made to the city clerk. Bills should become delinquent on the first day of the following month and delinquent bills shall have added one point five percent late payment charge to each of the following: natural gas, electric, and sewer. A delinquent bill will also be charged a flat charge of five dollars for water and five dollars for garbage. That's what's new. The five dollar charge for water and five dollar charge for garbage. When the, and, and I will tell you that since we've been talking about this, we've had some people come in and pay their past due. So they're not late anymore. So I think this could be a good thing. Uh, when the due date falls on a Saturday, Sunday, or holiday, the city clerk shall accept payment on the next office day without penalty.
I move that we accept twenty fifteen dash oh four.
Second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept city ordinance twenty fifteen oh four for the city of Wall Lake. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent.
Where is he?
He's pushing me here, isn't he?
It's teeming his own.
Discuss and approve ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh five. You wanna go through that one too, Chris?
So, yeah.
And this will be the second reading of this one, correct?
We can, if you guys so choose, we can waive the third reading, cause there's four of us here. Everybody has to vote yes. You have to have sixty-seven percent vote to waive,
The third reading.
any, any reading, so. If that's something you guys wanna do, we can do that.
Go ahead and read that one, Chris.
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna do that if Rob leaves me alone. Uh, the rate of sewer rent shall be one hundred percent of the net water bill uh, for each premise. But the minimum rent shall be eleven dollars per month. That used to read the rate of sewer rent shall be seventy-five percent of the net water bill, or eight twenty-five. So, we've increased that to a hundred percent of the water bill.
Entertainer motion please?
I move we, uh, approve the second reading and waive the third reading, or can I do that in some order?
No, we gotta have separate.
I move we's, we approve the second reading of it.
Of twenty fifteen oh five, all, uh, second please.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept ordinance for the city of Wall Lake, twenty fifteen dash oh five. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yeah.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Now I will accept the motion to waive the third reading.
I'll make that motion to...
Waive the third reading.
Waive the third reading on twenty dash fifteen oh five.
And you can make that motion to waive the third reading and finally approve.
That one can do together, yeah.
You can do those two together.
And final approval of the motion.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to waive the third reading and final approval of ordinance for the city of Wall Lake, twenty fifteen oh five. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Okay. Discuss and approve city ordinance twenty fifteen oh six.
I'm gonna let Rob read this one.
Not my job.
No, uh, so, the only thing that's changed on this, this is residential electric rates, and what has changed here is, uh, the first thousand kilowatts will be billed at point zero nine three five instead of point zero nine one. The next thousand will be point zero seven three five instead of point zero seven one. And then, and anything over two thousand kilowatt hours will be billed at point zero six nine five instead of point zero six seven cents per kilowatt hour.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty six, twenty fifteen dash oh six.
What, read that second one again, what you said.
The second one, so the next one thousand kilowatt hours,
Yeah.
will be billed at point zero seven three five cents per kilowatt hour.
What did you say after, what, what was it before?
It used to be point zero seven one cents per kilowatt hour.
What you said?
Yeah.
It is?
Yeah.
No, I, I was, I thought I was following, I didn't get that.
Nope, I remember him saying point zero seven one.
Okay.
Well, if I didn't, then,
Yeah.
that's what it is, that's what it should be.
Well, that's what I thought it should be, but I didn't what you said, so that's why I was wondering.
Motion please?
I'll make a motion, we approve point twenty fifteen oh six.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the city of Wall Lake ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh six. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Now I will accept a, uh, waiver of the third reading and a finalization.
I'll make that motion, waiver of the third rea- reading and the finalization of the...
Twenty fifteen oh six.
Twenty fifteen oh six.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to waive the third reading and finalize the amendment, or the ordinance, excuse me, ordinance of twenty fifteen oh six. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Discuss and approve ordinance twenty fifteen dash oh seven.
Okay.
And Chris will go through that one with you.
Yeah, and this one is similar to the last one, only this one is for commercial customers. Uh, and it is electric rates also, the first thousand kilowatt hours will be billed at point zero nine three five cents per kilowatt hour. It was point zero nine one cents per kilowatt hour. Anything over a thousand kilowatt hours is gonna be billed at point zero nine six,
Nope.
point zero six nine five uh, cents per kilowatt hour, and it was point zero six seven cents per kilowatt hour.
And that will be point zero six nine five. Anything past the second thousand, correct?
Nope. Anything over a thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, first thousand.
Right.
On up, doesn't make any difference, there's no limit.
Nope.
Okay. Motion to accept city ordinance twenty fifteen oh seven.
I make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the city of Wall Lake ordinance twenty fifteen oh seven. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent.
One thing, uh, Steve, uh, when will this take effect, first of year, or what, what is our...
Yeah, yeah.
This is years for the first year.
We can't, we can't do anything, we've gotta publish it for ten days, so it'll, it'll hang up there for ten days afterwards, so nothing will go into effect until the first year.
January one. Okay? Uh, we've had all that old business taken care of, right Chris?
Uh, we gotta, we gotta...
Oh, the third reading, third reading and the waiver and the finalization, I'm sorry, yep.
I move we approve it.
No, we waived.
Or waive the third reading of twenty fifteen oh seven and,
Finalization.
and finalize twenty fifteen oh seven.
Second?
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to waive the third reading of twenty fifteen oh seven and to finalize the ordinance. Uh, roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron is absent. Okay. You gonna move down to the sealed bids?
Yeah, unless, well, I guess we can't do anything with Royce's, can we?
Nope, he ain't here yet, our man.
Okay, so we did get, we did get another bid for the garage.
And the house.
Drumroll.
And the house.
We got a bid for the house.
There's a bid for the house.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you guys are gonna like that one.
Probably only a dollar, but... Yeah, but it's better than nothing.
You're gonna tear that one.
That's right.
Not necessarily. This is a good one. Mick King, the whole reason why we're doing this now, he wanted to bid again, he bid five hundred and thirteen dollars. So that's good.
On the garage.
Cause I know what's in here and it's not that much.
What was this is?
Two hundred.
Oh, okay.
So, that's a great deal there. We'll take that, and here's my bid for the house.
How about you? You gotta open the other one.
No, I don't. I know what's in it.
Yeah, with the council.
Yeah, but you still gotta open.
Council needs to know what's in there.
You still gotta open.
Was it Mick's Kings?
Five thirteen. I was kinda hoping two hundred dollars. I was kinda hoping, okay, I bet a dollar for the house.
Let's, well, let's, let's, let's back up, let's get the garage taken care of first, can we do that?
Oh, that's fine.
Let's, let's do the garage first, if you guys don't care, and then we'll work on the house. Five thirteen.
I move a motion that we accept the bid for five hundred and thirteen dollars from King.
Yep, Mick King.
Mick King. And it has to be out of there by June first, right?
June one of twenty sixteen.
I was gonna say, we wanna put a moving date on it.
Yeah, that's what's on.
We did that in the paper.
Yeah, I can't remember if that was in there or not.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to accept the current bid of five hundred and thirteen dollars for the hu- garage at,
Two oh eight?
Two oh eight Main Street, Wall Lake, Iowa, to Mick King.
Thought he was gonna say that.
Aye.
All in favor say aye. Okay, now Chris, proceed to your house.
Yeah, I bet a dollar. Nobody else has bid on it last time and...
I move we accept the bid of a dollar.
I'll second that.
Oh.
Aye.
Do I need a roll call or do we just?
Do a roll call, will ya?
Uh, been moved and seconded to accept the bid of one dollar for the house at two oh eight Main, and that will be either moved or tore down at the discretion of Chris. And, uh, that has to be done by June first also, twenty sixteen. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed nay? There better not have been a nay while we're, otherwise I'd have come across.
I don't know what I should have said, Dave.
Chris is hoping there'd be a bunch of nays.
I was kinda hoping you guys would throw that right out the window.
We don't nay-nay.
Well, I'll tell you what, Chris, I'm just glad that...
We're a little looser over here, Royce, than like you is.
You utilize it, hope you can utilize it, because it's kinda...
I'm gonna move it up to that lot, up there on top of the hill, right across the street from me, so. Guess we'll see.
Good. Okay, discuss employee raises and clerk evaluations.
Yeah, so the first thing I wanna talk about, we talked about it a little bit already, you guys have your, uh, evaluation sheet, Rob's using it right, right here. I think what we should do, and, and I don't, I, I don't think we did this last time, but I think what we should do is give you guys a couple of weeks, write on here, whatever you wanna write on here, give it to Steve, and Steve can put it together, and what we do, what we do at the school, we do the same thing at the school, uh, is write down all the ratings, all the rating numbers, average them up, do that, and then if there's any comments, write down the comments exactly how they're written on the pieces of paper.
Correct.
And then you and I can go through it, and then we can sit down and talk to council and...
Uh, if you would like to have a one-on-one with me, that's fine, just call me, and we can set up a, a timer, a schedule, that we can come in and do a one-on-one. If you wanna do it here, or you wanna do it at your house, or you wanna do it at my house, or wherever you wanna do it, that's fine. If you're comfortable just filling it out, just handing it to me, that's fine with me, if I've got questions, I will definitely call you. Now, you want this done for each employee, correct, or just you?
No, this is just me.
Just, just Chris?
Yeah, and then I'm gonna do the employees.
Okay, and you'll bring that?
He, he knows, he knows what the other employees are doing, I'm sure.
Uh, so then, the next thing on there, uh, employee raises, you know, every, every year we have a couple of councilmen come into my office, we sit down and we talk about, uh, good, bad, whatever we need to do. Right. Um, so we kinda have, uh, you know, a little bit of an idea of what we think we wanna do when we get in here. Um, so I, you know, I wanted to ask, who do we wanna have, do, do we wanna have two guys do it like we have in the past, do we wanna have everybody come in?
I think it should be everybody.
Everybody by themselves?
I think everybody should come in, because I can't see just two people saying what, what they think should be done.
That's fine.
That's my opinion, I mean, if somebody else...
You're gonna have to relay this to, to Ron, or Chris can relay this to Ron.
Yeah, I can tell Ron.
Okay, so that he's aware of what's going on, cause he'll like stop and do.
Everyone comes in, that's what it is.
Next one evaluates, the next one evaluates, the next one evaluates, and decide.
We gotta look at his too, so why is he there?
We don't have to look at his at that meeting.
No.
We can look at everybody else.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I'm wondering. Okay.
Good question.
Were you gonna do it each individually, or won't you run into problems with the Iowa open meeting law?
Well, that's, that's the thing, if we have a meeting, then it'll be an open meeting. No, if we do, if we do individual councilman, no, then it's not an open meeting.
As long as you don't have three in a pile.
Yeah, so I'll show up for them.
Right.
That's why they wanna do it individually.
Yeah.
And that way, like, Chris will be in his office, and then Rob is gonna come in, and they're gonna sit down and say, "Okay, we're gonna talk about Rick Hoppy, or we're gonna talk about Daryl LaMuck, or we're gonna talk about Meyer Norick", whoever they wanna talk about individually, and they might talk about all of them, and get it all out of there, which I'm thinking, that's what they hope they, they'll do, so. Uh, no, we don't, we definitely don't wanna court them, definitely. Otherwise we get our hands slapped. Thanks, Royce, appreciate that.
No, we ain't gonna do that. But we need to get evaluation on how much this insurance is going up, Chris, I have to put something together, see it, see what this cost factor is gonna be coming up. Does health insurance jump about twenty-five percent?
Well, I think, I think that's why you need to...
So we have to find out what that is gonna be.
Yep. Come in and talk to Chris and say, "This is what I would like to have see for numbers, or this is what I would like to have reported to me, and I, so I can make a determination on what I wanna do. This is how I wanna do it." So, make sure you talk to Chris, and like Chris has always said, he wishes that you would set up an appointment with him, just don't pop in the door because he could be busy with something else, right Chris?
Yeah.
So if you can kinda set up a half-ass appointment with him, that would be very much appreciated.
I don't say anything.
So, okay, uh, as far as the clerks, just let me know when you, uh, got it put together, and you wanna hand it in, or talk to me, or do whatever you'd like, just let me know, you can either call me out south, twenty-four forty-four, or you can call me at house, two eight nine six. Got her? Uh, clerk's report, Chris, you're up.
Yep, page nine. Uh, if you look at that, uh, top line there, twenty-four thousand oh twenty-eight, that was our balance, uh, last month. Go through, uh, what we paid and what we got in. Um, you can see that, uh, our balance now is ten thousand seven oh eight. Uh, couple of things in there, transfer to savings, uh, sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Fifty thousand of that was our taxes. So I like to take that, that money and put it into our, uh, um, it's, it's kind of our sweep account, it's just a savings account, that way it's not sitting in our general fund and it just gets spent on whatever gets spent on, so.
Kind of like a slush fund type deal, it's kinda hidden, but...
Little bit, uh, I mean, we still have to use it. The, uh, thirteen thousand dollars that came out of, uh, savings was for our, uh, payment to Westside Bank. Um, TIF funds of fifty-six eighty-three thirteen. Uh, those are, um, some more taxes that we got in, uh, at, at the end there. And all of our TIF funds that we get in from now until, uh, kinda the foreseeable future, go right from the TIF fund into the general fund, because we spent the money out of the general fund already to, uh, to pay for what we've paid for, so.
We get five grand from that lost fund?
You know, we have, uh, we have a lost, um, account at the bank, and every month roughly forty-seven hundred dollars gets put into that account.
Oh, okay.
So frequently I will move that money from that account into our general fund to pay for, um, you know, sometimes it's, sometimes it's salaries, sometimes it's, I try to code it to something, so we can tell the auditor what we used that money for. Um, I still think, uh, you know, our, uh, ballot is gonna get us written up, so, uh, I, I don't think it matters what we do uh, to tell them where it was spent, we're still gonna get written up for that, so. So, next page, uh, you look at page ten, and you can see our, uh, balance sheet there. And if you look at, uh, the bottom, bottom line there, the bond payment fund, a hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. You know, we've kinda talked about that hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark that we need to get to, to be able to not have to borrow money to continue with our electric rebuild. Uh, so we're just about there now, um, and we've got, uh, we've got enough material for all of next year, for sure. Uh, depending on, you know, how much, uh,
We can get accomplished.
We can get accomplished next year, right, so, so that's a good thing there, um, the, uh, you know, I guess debt service, you can look at debt service, all that money will be spent, um, on Tuesday. That's our, uh, interest for our bonds, so, that's about, uh, ten thousand eight hundred dollars, I think, is, is what our interest is. So that money'll pretty much be gone. Library checking, eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine. Uh, Jody let me know that the, uh, the board did decide to, uh, replace a furnace for us, um, and they're gonna, she said, you know, whatever money we get from Will McGosh, we will put towards the furnace, and, uh, so I, I said, I asked her if they would be willing to look at replacing it before, uh, they get the money, since they've got twelve thousand dollars sitting here roughly, uh, sitting in their bank account, and so she's gonna talk to the board about that. She got a couple of bids, and I don't know exactly what they were. Uh, I know Mike gave her a bid, and I think, uh, Dick Petchawar gave her a bid.
Put it in, I'll save, save some energy, cause that thing goes out the roof.
That's kinda what I thought too.
It's obsolete. It can't be that much, put that furnace in, everything is there. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I think it's about thirty-nine hundred dollars for the furnace and a new, uh, a new air conditioner coil. Whatever that's called, I don't know.
But they don't have natural gas down there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't have any, uh, any heat other than,
Natural gas.
Natural gas, yeah. Um...
Stop, Chris, anytime that you got questions.
Yeah, so, uh, one of the things, well, uh, I'll talk about that when we get there, um, the, uh, the wellness center checking, ninety-eight hundred dollars, you know, we've talked a little bit about using some of that money for the, uh, the project that we're gonna do at the pool later on. Um, you know, I know that, that account now is up over ten thousand dollars, and this, this is the time of year that we generally start getting money in, because people wanna come in and work out in the wintertime, so. So that, that account's just gonna grow, and, uh, you know, whenever we wanna take that money and move it over to the pool account, I think.
That wouldn't be a bad idea, because that way, you know, it's going towards the new filters or whatever we're gonna use it for.
Well, I think we need to use it when we do a fundraiser.
Well, and that's fine too, whatever works for.
Or sneak it in the back door and then say, "Oh, this is how much money we raised."
Well...
At this fundraiser, people go, "Wow."
That might wake 'em up. Probably spring would be a good time, because everybody's thinking about the pool.
Oh, I think we need to do it in right here.
We need to do it, yeah, before spring.
Earlier than that.
It's a good number to start off with, that way it shows that, uh, we've got money.
Yeah, and I, you know, actually,
Well, whatever works.
In all honesty too, is, I think that, uh, that the, uh, community center main CD there, uh, eleven forty-two, that's fifty thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's coming due next month. And do we need to leave fifty thousand dollars in there or not?
I don't think so.
You know, I mean, that's something the community center board has talked over, and, and they would like to throw maybe five thousand dollars this way out of that CD, if we go re-up it. Or if it even be ten, if we re-up.
Yeah, it could be twenty, wouldn't hurt.
If we re-up it to forty, you know, I think that everybody'd be happy.
I would think that would help too.
Cause I think, you know, as we were talking about grants and this and that, uh, I think that if the filter system and all that, we're talking about spending maybe seventy thousand dollars a year, I think if we get through the whole grant system, I think between five thousand dollars from the wellness center and ten thousand from the community center CD, I think we could probably get by.
Well, it's a start.
You know, I think we could probably get by with it, but it's also seed money to apply for those grants, and yes, we do have some money behind it already. Yeah, but I, but I think, you know, I'm talking about the other foundations that we always contacted. They've always been very generous to about projects like this. I think we could almost get the filter net covered.
Yeah.
Couldn't we?
I think we can.
Be up close.
I think the fifteen thousand dollars would probably get us there. So I, you know, with that, I guess, I don't know, should I make a motion?
I think we should. Move five and, and to ten. How are you thinking?
Yeah.
We can't do that.
Toward, towards the pool?
So, I don't know if you can do that. Can you agree with that?
We, we do it all the time when we're doing the clerk's report, really.
The clerk's report's on there, so I think we're all right there.
That's, that's fine. I just wanna make sure that.
I would think that when we re, I'll, I'll make this motion. When we re-up the Community Center main CD, that we do it at the forty thousand level and take the rest of the money that's there and, and, uh, apply it to our pool
Pool Fund.
renovation fund and also that we take, uh, five thousand dollars from the Wellness Checking and put it in the pool renovation fund.
You made a motion. I'll second it.
Yeah, okay.
Motion's been made to move money from the Wellness Center to the pool fund for, as a start for a fundraiser. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Wellness Center and the Community Center.
And, well, okay, Wellness Center and the Community Center. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oh, opposed nay?
So, just to clarify it a little bit, Rob, you want also the interest that we're gonna earn on that CD to go towards it, too? Okay.
I'm gonna just go ahead and do a forty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars CD.
Now.
Can you get, what are you getting for that CD right now? You getting one or two or?
I think it's, I think right now it's, uh, four tenths of a percent.
Really, uh, you know, these CDs, you can always borrow against it. If you went out two years, you waited after the first year, I think we could get to two percent. Two percent of forty's a lot more than four oh. You can always pull out, borrow against it if we had to, you know? That's not the issue.
You wanna shut that off?
I think you just will go out one or two years, Rob.
I don't think so.
Why not? You can always pull against it.
They're talking, they might raise this.
Well, after the first, when you raise that quarter percent, you don't wanna do it before the first. You wanna wait till after the first and see what the interest is and check on it and, and making that decision, Rob, what do you think is right?
Yeah, it, our, uh,
Point four oh is nothing.
Well, yeah, I know it is.
Yeah, this one was an eighteen inch, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, it just.
And that might've got us to a half a percent, but, uh, it's not over that.
Now, if you go out about two years, you could get one and a half to two, better than nothing.
That's a lot better than a half.
Yeah, better than a half, but yeah.
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 Gary, you just give us five percent on it. We'll, we'll call it good.
We're used for the money, I think. That's something to think about, I think.
Okay, so, let's move on. Is there any other thing that you guys wanna talk about on the first page there, page ten?
Okay, I wanna ask you the cemetery checking. Now, what Carol called me about this last one, Sharp Funeral Home, I said make it out to the City of Wall Lake, but I think I goofed. Probably should be made out to the cemetery, right?
Uh, you know, it doesn't have to be. The City of Wa- Wall Lake is okay. We can, we can take it down and cash it and we can tell them what account we want to put it in.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
But from now on, from now on, I would say put it in the City of Wall Lake Cemetery account.
That's what, after I done, I thought, ooh, I might've screwed up.
No, no, that's not too big of a deal, cause we frequently take money down there and put it in different accounts and
Okay.
and I can even go on the computer and move it around in there, too, so.
So, I wanted to make it right.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, it's okay. Um, one question I had about that, and Lynn, you can help me with that. The checks that we've written to Rick for digging graves, that comes out of this account, right? Or have we been writing, uh?
We've been writing them out of the general fund.
Okay, so we need to transfer that money.
So, transfer that money and start writing them out of the cemetery fund?
Yeah, from now on, whatever we write to Rick will come out of the cemetery. Do we have checks for that?
Yes.
We do, okay.
Cause I thought that he was gonna get some, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Can you move on, Chris?
Okay, so let's go to page twelve. And we'll talk a little bit about cemetery lots, uh, sale of cemetery lots. You look at that and you think twenty-one, twenty-one, what the hell did we sell a cemetery lot for a hundred and twenty-one dollars for? We didn't, uh, we got some donations from, uh, people in the community after Burtus died. Uh, so, I can't remember exact amount of not money, but, uh, it was quite a bit. It was five hundred bucks, wasn't it, Lynn? Five, six hundred dollars, and then that, uh, one twenty-one was on there, so it might've been six hundred and twenty-one dollars. The rest of that, obviously, would be, uh,
Lots.
lots that were sold, so. And then you can see on there, uh, general property tax and local option sales tax came in. Uh, local option sales tax, we had two deposits in this month, one, one on the first and one on the thirtieth. Uh, so, that's why that's kinda doubled up there. Um, if you look at that, that bottom transfer in, thirty-five thousand two twenty-six sixty-one, that's TIF money. That's TIF funds that we've gotten in that we're gonna transfer into our general fund, so we'll be able to follow that a little bit. Uh, next page, not a hell of a lot to talk about on that page, uh. Next page, we can see the library and they're following real close to their budget, so that's a good thing. Uh, parks, we should be done with the renovation expense there. Pool should be pretty much done costing us money. Um, and cemetery, we don't do too much out of there, out there anymore.
No, you'll be getting some builds, though, for that.
What's that?
You'll be getting some builds for the cemetery, for the pipe, if you haven't got them already.
Yeah, we probably haven't gotten that.
But I don't think I'm gonna get it all in now till spring because I don't wanna put that stuff, that, uh, silicone in there and have it freeze. It's gonna dry.
Yeah.
But at least I got started.
Uh, Community Center, nothing really out of the ordinary there. Pretty, pretty normal. Pretty good expenses. We had, uh, I think that was the coolers. The majority of that was the coolers. So. And if you look, uh, we actually are, uh, not negative in our general fund. And generally, at this time of year, we're negative in our general fund and, and the reason for that is for the, the TIF money going back into the general fund. That's, uh, helping us out there, so. So, if you wanna move on to, uh, page seventeen, and this is what I was gonna talk about on the balance sheet. Gary keeps telling me that, uh, we've got extra money to spend in the, in the road use department.
I hope we do. I hope we do, but it'd be nice.
And we, we will get, uh, you know, we will get, they're talking about us getting about ninety-five thousand dollars this year and generally we'd get eighty, eighty-one thousand, so we will have more, uh, revenue coming in. Um, now we, you know, some of that stuff that we did up there on Second Street, that's gonna cost us a little more money, uh, out of here.
Where's our snow removal? What count does that come out of? Does that come out of the road use or not?
Well, what we do with the snow removal generally is we put it in, uh, the general fund until the end of the year, and then I move it all to here.
That's what I thought.
And the reason why we do that is because our, uh, payroll system is set up that all Lynn has to do is punch a button and it, and it allocates it right to our general fund. Uh, and I don't wanna change that because I'm afraid I'll mess it up if I do. So then we know what we spent in there and then we just, uh, move it over to here. You can see right there in the middle of the page, there's snow removal, uh, right there, so.
Okay, that was my next question. Can you break that down then, like after, like in March or April, so we know what we've spent? Say from the first of November till, you can break it down and say, okay, this was all used for snow removal as far as truck maintenance wages, blah, 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 blah?
Yep.
All that kinda stuff, okay, okay.
Yep, and so, you know, that, Gary, is a, is gonna be a big factor on whether or not we have more money to spend at the end of the year.
Well, we got a lot of streets done and I think if we get this extra, we can, we can pretty well get our streets pretty healthy stuff.
Well, you know, we wanna continue to do what we've been doing.
Yeah.
Uh, hopefully, we won't have that much snow.
Well, that and hopefully we won't have any breakdowns in the trucks
Yeah.
for snow blades, for repairs and stuff like that, so.
Now, so far, it's, it's been okay.
I'm sticking around this year, so you're gonna get the snow. Hate to tell you that.
So we're gonna take it out of Albert's pocket.
It might be worth shifting your ass down there.
That's right. And then their streets, they done go too long. They're all shot now, so now, all once we're gonna put this big cement, about a block in for about fifty thousand dollars, and now they're gonna order up and they ain't getting nothing done because the, the contractor didn't get there. So the people in Arcadia are not very happy and we don't wanna have that trouble here.
They got enough things to bitch about here. We don't even wanna do that, too.
You're not, you're not staying, are you, this winter?
No, I'll, I'll let you guys handle it. Albert's gonna take my place.
Yeah.
TIF's the next one, and, uh, I guess the only really thing to point out there is a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in our account. Um, and in about eight days, uh, that's gonna be seventy thousand dollars lighter, cause we're gonna pay that note at, uh, Westside State Bank, so. Get that taken care of. Debt service, uh, this account, uh, says seventeen thousand. Actually, there's ten thousand in the account. I just haven't transferred some, uh, transferred six thousand dollars into savings from here, so I'm gonna work to do that till the end of the year. Um, but this money is, we, we get this money in strictly to pay our, uh, bond interest, so that's what we're gonna continue to do with that. Page twenty, then, uh, you see our utilities. Uh, natural gas is gonna start taking off here, you know, obviously it's gotten like quite a bit colder here the last few days, and so that one, this month should be decent. It's not gonna be as good as normal, but it should be decent with this last week. Um, and, you know, hopefully, hopefully it is a, a cold winter, cause, uh, you know, that, not that I wanna have to pay heating bills, but natural gas really helps us out through the year, so that would be a good thing for us to, to get a little revenue there. So then we'll go to our electric utility and I mean, you can see sixty-two thousand dollars, that's really low, uh, for revenue and because it's been so nice and warm and, um, didn't make a lot of money either, so. And you guys are gonna see that in the electric fund from now on, you know, that thirteen thousand dollars that we're gonna pay on that, on that note every month is really gonna eat into the, uh, the what money we make, what, whatever the hell I'm trying to say.
Revenue.
Profit.
Revenue.
Rob knows.
It's gonna come out somewhere.
So, uh, next page, twenty-two, natural gas, uh, and you can see that's, that's really short, too, you know, I mean, we just, uh, haven't sold any natural gas. We did sell some to some farmers, so that was a good thing. But also, uh, Western Iowa Energy shut down for, I don't know, probably about a month in the last part of October and the first part of November, so, uh, our, our bill is really, really weak, uh, on that end again, so. Um, so, I guess, uh, you know, if it gets cold, then we'll start making some money. If not, we're gonna continue to muddle along like this. Water. Made a little bit of money in water. We don't have too much expense in there anymore since we did the project and got that over.
All the upgrades, yeah.
So, not too much for expense in there. And sewer is, that's where we're spending all our money right now, so that one's not gonna look good.
You know, four states, it's gonna, five states, we're going that way, too.
Yep, it's gonna keep going that way. Now, that, that added revenue, that'll help, but, uh,
Not gonna make a difference.
Yeah, I'd say we'd just barely be out of the hole if we don't have any more problems by the end of the year.
As long as we don't find any more screw-ups in the infrastructure.
Right, so.
So, exactly right.
And then garbage, obviously, we know that, you know, we've talked about that, uh, adding a little bit to our rates there, but we're gonna wait and see what happens.
Yeah, before we make a decision.
Before we make a decision. I think that's a smart deal.
Albert and I are going to a meeting tomorrow night, so we'll find out a few more things, so.
Yeah, but I don't think they'll have yet what, how much of a raise.
That won't come out till December.
December.
So, but we'll, Albert or I will, one of us will give you, keep you up, updated and informed on what's going on up there, so.
Well, garbage in the black just for a little while, so that was good.
Yeah. Well, you been on Long Island, I've heard. This the first time you ever seen it in the black?
Steve's, he's in the contracts, this, this meeting then?
What's that?
On that building, he's in the contracts, it'll be in this meeting or?
No.
No.
Contracts went out in November, when you say second or seventh?
Second of November, I think they went out.
Sometime in the eighteenth or fifteenth, fifteenth?
We got a special meeting the fifteenth of December.
And that's when we'll accept it.
It's supposed to be back in the first week in December.
Yeah, eighth or something like that, a week before our meeting.
Yeah, something like that.
That's all I've got, guys, for the, uh, clerk's report.
I'd make a motion if we approved the clerk's report.
Second. Any other discussion to Chris or any questions? If not, Franny's made a motion. I've had a second. Good stuff to clerk's report. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed nay? Your man coming, Royce?
There, there, well, probably on their way.
Okay. Uh, discuss the gift of land from Burtus Pittman for use as a park.
That's a deal.
So it is a deal.
Now, if you're, if you're not familiar, Franny, can you help us out here? It's a sixty by sixty tract.
Well, it's kinda east of Maryland.
It's down by that little house.
It's, it's right across the street from you guys.
Oh, there.
Land across the street from you, that.
You know where that, uh,
Yeah, manhole.
Manhole, that's on the, that's on the southeast corner of that lot and then it just goes up the hill from there.
It's a sixty by sixty. That's where Janet Beck.
Is it, uh, our lift station ain't on it?
Nope.
It's right by there, though, right?
No.
Is that our lift station?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it is on it.
It is on, but, but we got the fifteen feet, we got the right of way.
And plant some flowers around that, call it good.
To color the park?
Well, you know, the other thing is it's got that tall pole that's been there for, I don't know how many years and hasn't fallen down, so.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if that's on it or not. I, I,
Yeah, I think it is.
I went on the, is it, I went on the, uh, internet and looked at the plot.
Lift station was on it, but it is on there, Franny?
The manhole's on it, yeah.
Okay.
It is right on the edge of it.
Okay.
Uh, so, you know, when I first read that, or when Gary first told me, I was like, you know, we, what are we gonna do with the park down there? But, uh, I don't know, you know, I mean, we could, we could get some sand and, uh, have a, have a sand playground.
I don't think we need to tour away from our park up here, though, Chris, to be honest with you.
Do, do, do we wanna take it? Do we have to take it?
We don't have to take it. If we don't want it, it'll go to Wayne. They can keep.
That's what I thought I read.
We can, we can say we don't want it and give it to him and he, and then he can do whatever he wants to with it. If we.
Well, if we keep it, we gotta mow it to keep it up and run it, right? Do something with it.
Yeah, we gotta mow it, we gotta, yeah.
Do we have to, do we have to make it into a park?
Worry about it.
Yes.
Oh.
We have to.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, that's what the, that's what the will says. I, I guess I would assume that if the will says that, that you have to do it. I mean, unless we wanna just go around it.
Contest the will, then.
Wow, you don't wanna contest it.
Well, then I think we should give it back to Wayne because I don't think we really need anything right there because like Gary says, if we gotta mow that, that hillside's pretty steep there to mow.
Yeah, it's.
Will that screw us up with our lift station on there? Franny?
Definitely, Steve.
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, we could have, we could have right of way to it anyway, so.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, as long as it don't screw that.
I'm sure we got right of way to that lift station.
What do you think, Robert?
Better have.
I mean, if it'd be a good piece of ground, it wouldn't be so bad, but.
He owns that property that, from, uh, over by Gangstead's on the other side of that.
Yeah.
And that, that'd be a hell of a good place for parking trucks, whereas we got a spot down there. But we probably couldn't get that for practically nothing, but that would be, that would be the worst.
And then the airport's a good place for them, cause they're not, you keep them off the streets.
Yep. Well, like I said, he owns that and I bet, I bet, I bet he don't wanna, Wayne don't wanna get rid of that, too, but whether, whether we would wanna, it'd be another thing.
Wayne's gonna want a pretty good price for that, though, I'll bet you. But they're in a good spot down there. They got the poles set and they got everything ready down there for them.
Do you wanna tell them also what we got for cash from him?
Yeah, we got, uh, the, the cemetery got twenty thousand dollars to put into a perpetual fund, so.
Now, listen.
We've got, we've got two perpetual funds, one at, well, I guess they're both at, uh, Westside. They're both in CDs and you can't ever touch the money that's in the CD, but you can use the interest that you make off of it, so we'll just add that twenty thousand dollars to one of the two CDs down there and, and that's what it is and whatever, uh, interest comes off of that, we'll.
Four hundred, four hundred at the most, only, a year.
If you could get two, three, four years down the road, that's about the best you can do.
It's not gonna, yeah. Right now, it's not gonna be that much.
Yeah, I don't want it even to be.
No, a hundred bucks at the most, so.
Okay, didn't know if you guys were interested in that. Now, do you wanna, do you wanna vote on whether we want that land or not?
We can't. Cause I didn't put a, any, uh, I just put discuss it.
Oh, you didn't put discuss it.
It's just a discussion item, so.
Yeah.
But I'm not, I'm not sure that we necessarily, well, I guess we probably should vote on that. Then, yeah, then it'll be official, so we'll do that at the next meeting.
We'll do that at the next meeting.
Yeah, we're not gonna get that for a long time, so we got a little time to think about it.
At least then, everybody can kinda go get a look at it again and see once.
I do every day.
I know you do every day, but.
Yeah, you don't wanna.
I can't help that, that you're doing that.
We don't wanna have to mow that at all.
Great, we're getting arrested.
First of all, the City of Wall Lake, Wall Lake, we'd like to congratulate Chief Royce on his internment for the, uh, leg of your job. Appreciate that. Royce, I'm gonna leave it up to you to make the introductions.
Okay, well, I'd like to introduce our crack crime fighting staff here, these two than me. Uh, our newest hire is Jeremy Berens. He's been with us since October twenty-sixth. Uh, you Wall Lakeans might remember Lonny Brown. This is his nephew.
Oh.
So, and Michelle Baylow. She's been with us for a couple of years now. She lives here in Wall Lake. So, but, yeah, I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce you, cause I know none of you met, or you haven't met Jeremy before and.
Appreciate it.
You may not all have met Michelle, so hopefully.
Are you any related to like the Behrens out here, Norm?
Norm would be my dad's cousin.
Oh, so you are related?
Yep, and then like Kane Walter Grody are my uncle too.
Okay.
Yeah, there's family around.
You wanna tell us where you uh, came from, why you're up here in the city of Lakeview?
Um, yeah, I started with the old police department seventeen, eighteen years ago. Um, got my certification there, went to Jefferson. From there, went to Denton Police Department where I worked my way up through the ranks, um, became second in charge of that department. Raising kids, stuff like that, it's just a town inside I wanted to get out of. After a number of years, I've seen, I've seen what I wanna see in law enforcement, now I just need to do my job, I don't need to have any more experience. And this is, this is an area I've got family, I've got some ties to, um, it's the area that got me started in law enforcement, so I just wanted to come back.
That was wonderful interview.
Yeah, and and because of course.
Okay, have you, you met my city clerk?
Have not, no.
No, we haven't met.
Chris, you wanna introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Chris Rodman, I'm the city clerk.
Okay.
Rob?
I'm Rob Germain, I own the grocery store here.
Oh, true.
You're in favor of the barber?
Franny's right now, I guess I don't know anything.
Albert's just, live here in town.
Liam Grossley, I'm the deputy clerk.
Steve Rubin gave Mayor of Wall.
Deputy too.
Yeah.
Well, Jeremy, that white Ford pickup you ran the plates on Saturday night?
Oh, yeah.
It's Rob, it's gotta be Rob.
What'd you do?
What'd you park?
I didn't think I did anything stupid.
No, they were looking for a Ford truck.
Driving down the rubber tracks, so. It could have been that one.
Our grocery store owner. Okay, appreciate it, guys, thanks for stopping.
Thank you for your time.
If you got any questions, please feel free to contact any one of us.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome to the morning.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Go shoot somebody.
Okay.
Go arrest some drug person. There you go.
Last thing on the agenda, discuss police contract with Lakeview.
Yeah, so in uh, let's see, twenty, twenty sixteen.
Would you like me to lead for this one?
If you would, please, Royce.
I'm gonna follow her now, you gentlemen have a wonderful day.
Thank you. See you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, June thirtieth is the last day that we have our contract with these guys. And so we need to work on it ahead of time to figure out what we're gonna do and. Uh, you know, I've talked to all you guys here about uh, how much I think we're spending extra. And so, you know, we just need to, we just need to figure out what we wanna do and which way we wanna go. I talked to Ken today, he's gonna get us a, a bid for the county. And uh, you know, he, he, he actually would like to come down and talk to you guys, just because there's a lot of uh. You know, maybe, I don't know, falsehoods or whatever you wanna call it, uh. They, they don't do any hours anymore, they just, you know, they, they come in when they come in and they leave when they leave and uh, so.
We have one in the town now, don't we, Sheriff?
We have one that lives here.
Deputy, yes.
Yes.
Definitely living right up the street.
Paterman, right. So.
We got a lot of cops sometimes, we're pretty good shape.
Well, I kinda agree with Chris. June's gonna roll around here and bam, it's gonna be upon us before we know it, so I think, just put this in the back of your head and, and start thinking about. Some things and maybe if you want Chris to get a, a meeting lined up with Sheriff McClure. Uh, if you wanna get a meeting lined up with uh, maybe Royce, or if you want them to come over and talk about their situation. On what they wanna do or what they can propose for us, I think that would be good.
Yeah, I think we should listen to both and come up with a opinion.
Well, come up with a game plan.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, because with Royce taking over for Ted, there could be a whole new ballgame there.
And there could be some questions that you, that you guys might have. For Royce, uh, I know I, I talked to Royce last Saturday uh, about some things and he's got an open door policy. More than likely go over and talk to him anytime you'd like. So, I stopped, talked to him to make sure, there was an incident down at the Wall Lake, uh, or Bank Midwest and. Chris said it hadn't been taken care of and I kinda wanted to do a little backup and it had been taken care of, uh, Chris didn't know it, I didn't know it. And then I forgot, lack of communication between Chris, I forgot to tell Chris that it was taken care of, so.
One of, one of the things that uh, somebody, I think it was Rick and I were talking today. And uh, we were just talking a little bit about this and, and uh, he said. He said something about the police department in Lakeview and, and I said, you know, I really don't care who provides our police service. As long as, as, as long as they do what we ask them to do and. Uh, the thing that bothers me right now is I believe we're paying fifteen thousand dollars more than we need to. Or than we could be for police service. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars, a lot of money.
One thing that Chris and I did talk about is that, and now that Helmuth's gone, maybe things will change, like Albert said, I don't know. But you know, um, not that I know, Albert's never, never been a ticket rogue. Here in the city of Wall Lake, now I'm not saying that let's get hard ass and write some tickets, but you know. I'll tell you, Chris can attest to this, the semis going out south of town, they're driving sixty, sixty-five mile an hour going up them hills. I'm guaranteeing you, cause I watch them every day, you know. Maybe it wouldn't hurt to pull somebody over and say, listen, let's make an example of you and. We just need to write ticket.
Well, Steve, I think Chris should go maybe to Hurley and Otte boat where they have the county. And, and ask the city clerk up at Hurley and them, how good, what kinda service they're giving them. Get a little idea of where, where we stand with the county, would hurt. And uh, and then we can talk with them and talk with both and. Come up with uh, some, some ideas, you know what I mean?
And Shaler, Shaler has them too, I bet.
Yeah.
No, they actually don't.
No, Shaler's got their own.
Shaler's trying to work out a deal with them that uh, you know, they've got their own cop, but they don't want him to be on all the time. They want him to be on for forty hours, whatever that be. But, so they're trying to work out a deal with the sheriff where they will provide coverage when their cop is not working. Whatever hours that may be.
Otte bolt is definitely Sack County Sheriff.
Oh, yeah, so is Hurley.
Uh, yeah, I believe that's correct. I don't know about Auburn.
I don't have a cop, I don't know who takes care of him.
I can't tell, I don't know who takes care of Auburn, I don't know.
Well, if we get an estimate from the county, we can kinda maybe use that as a little leverage. For over here in Lakeview too, I don't know, if that'll help or not.
Oh, you want unplugged? You see, I see you got, is that, is electric cost there, Chris, you got something on that?
Yeah. Don't waste all the motions over though, cause you can't hear nothing when that's going on, so.
Okay, the other thing that I was gonna bring up to you, and I know Cindy and uh, and Tammy are working on the. Gift for the Sack County League of Cities for our December meeting. And that will be at Sack City, I believe, correct, Rob?
I don't know, I didn't sign it up.
And I believe that is December tenth, and here's the conflict. Northwest Iowa League of Cities, which is having the same thing. We're trying to raise money for scholarships for kids in Northwest Iowa, and that is also December tenth. And Albert and I are on the, well, Cindy's helping us, Cindy and Tammy are helping us with some of the gifts that are going in our goody bag too, so. I just sorta bring you up to date there, both of them are December tenth, you'll have to tell Chris which one you'd prefer to go to if you wanna go to any of them, so.
Personally, I think if you're gonna go to any of them, I think you should stay in the county.
Ten-four. I know Peterson's going to the one in the county. Sounds like everybody over there that's going, is going there.
So, uh, anybody got anything else that they'd like to talk about?
Yeah, we got the new uh, deals up with Community Bank, the new uh. Cuddles and uh, what are we gonna do to the old cuddles, we, we gotta put them on eBay or sell them, or what is our projection or for that? Are they worth any money or?
I think they're worth money. Where are they? They're down in our uh.
City shed.
City shed, yeah.
Could, could have made a deal and sell them, you know, when we want them, uh, bring them in, or would they, could you make a deal with that, you couldn't? Didn't make no deal.
Trade them in?
Yeah, trade them in, or what happened?
I don't know that the company that we got them from would take a trade in.
Cause there's a lot of ways to sell them, you can go to like, you know, bar, bar deals, I suppose there's places like that too to.
Well, we've got a sealed bid for one in my office right now. And we haven't even done anything with that yet. Somebody heard about it, they thought we were gonna do a sealed bid, so they got it over here. So.
Okay, anybody else got anything?
I guess we can open it up for that and.
Sealed bids.
If we don't get enough interest and.
Or, or.
Yeah, cause we can, you can reject any, you can reject any sealed bid that you.
Yeah, we definitely don't wanna sit on, I mean, if we get something out of it for nothing.
It'll cost nothing to do eBay.
I'm setting it.
Yeah, right. And the longer they sit where they're at.
Are they worth five hundred pieces?
Oh, I think, easily.
Should be.
Yeah.
They're not that old, they should be.
Yeah, the problem is, is there's a lot of that stuff around.
Yeah, that's true.
But they're in top shape, they still work?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
If not, I'd entertain a motion to.
I got one thing I wanna talk about here, uh, the last page there in your uh, in your packet.
Already shut it off.
Uh, the uh, our, our total cost for energy is uh, six point two cents. Per kilowatt hour, uh, until you figure in the wind turbine and then it goes down to five point two cents. Um, so you take that, that one penny, a little better than one penny and, and multiply that across the. Seven million kilowatts that we've purchased and produced. And our wind turbine has saved us seventy-two thousand four hundred and forty dollars roughly, obviously, uh, this year.
I think that's worth a change.
And that's through, um, was that through October, yeah?
That's through October.
Through October, uh.
You got November, December yet.
Yeah.
Any questions for Chris on that?
Well, I, I can see where we're slowly losing electricity usage. Cause more natural gas going on, like my house, get all these new bulbs in, I've cut my energy at at least twenty dollars a month. And I got different refrigerators, so all that cuts back into the city usage, I don't know what the difference is between a year ago and this year and. Well, we, right down here, uh, CPS. We cut, we'll cut a lot of usage off of that, so we're definitely gonna take in less money in the city. Either, it looks to me.
CPS where I'm at, or CPS where Franny's at?
That's all now, natural gas out there, that's, that's gonna be a big cut this year.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the number's gonna be here, but we're definitely gonna take in a lot less money.
You should make it up on the backside because we're heating more.
Well, maybe, but I do know these, these lights and all that make quite a difference.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna certainly sell less uh, less kilowatt hours, Gary, you're right.
It's gonna be that way, just with it.
But.
Our line loads less.
Your natural gas.
Yeah, that might help us, Franny, in the long run, see, that could help us on the one end. And we're picking up on the natural gas, so it ain't really what you call a loss, you know, but.
Yeah, you pick it up on the natural gas because they extended that heating to the east, eighty by two hundred foot. Is now heat, which it never used to be, it used to be all full thirty.
People hooking up the natural gas, I know three people that hooked up this year already, so.
One other thing I wanna point out to you guys, since you got this open, is at the bottom of that page, if you look, look at January. And then go over to uh, the next column over, you got point zero five six, six two. That's uh, what we bought our energy for, total price that we bought our energy for in January. And if you go all the way over to the right, you can see point zero eight one six, that's what we sold it for. As our total average sales for, so we averaged about two and a half cents per kilowatt hour in January. That we, that we made.
Actually made.
Profit.
Right.
Yeah. Before all of our expenses, before all of our expenses.
Right, okay.
Well, you know, I don't know, I mean, uh, I, I think it should be more than that, but uh, you know, we're. We're kinda working that out, I think, and, and if you go down to September, you look at September, we made three cents there. Uh, you know, so.
Let's do baby steps before we do big giant steps.
Well, what's the difference there, what, what do you think the, the generator did that, or what, what make that difference September, well, why would it be three cents?
We're getting more efficient.
Yeah, it's.
Well, September, you don't, you don't run near as, mid share conditioning and there's much, so the generator is.
I know you got five hundred dollars from me for a demand charge.
You have doubt.
Yeah.
Well, part of it is, in September, you don't use as much electricity. So the less electricity that we use individually, the more it costs. Because our, our uh, rate schedule is ratcheting down, so the more you use, the less it costs you as an individual, so. That's part of the reason why that's that way. That's why January and February are so much cheaper than everything else. Cause people, they're heating their house with electricity.
Live with the new lineup here.
It is.
When, when, when was it?
Uh, good question. Probably uh, a portion of it's been probably a month and a half. And then the, the last little bit was just done here not too long ago. So, but that's not gonna change a lot.
You know, but I, I think there's could be some. We're, 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 we don't have a line loss that we were having before.
I agree.
Uh, you know, so I think we're gonna see quite a difference there, you know, when it's all said and done.
As we, as we continue on, I think you're right, Franny.
But we knew that was an issue there, obviously there was a line loss there.
Yeah.
That we were having.
Don't quote me on this, Dave Franny, but I'm, I, for some reason, October sixth sticks in my head. Is when they started that project, or they started that line, I mean, where they started hooking in, I think.
I think there was some before that.
It really shows though, that generator has done some good this year.
Oh, and that's every year. That's every year.
For a while, we, so we thought we wasn't making any money out of it, but that's not true then.
No. That's definitely not true.
I've heard that few stories, oh, they, we doing them good, you know?
Well, we still don't know how it affects our demand for sure.
That's where it kills us.
That's what we really do.
But, but here's the thing though, our demand, our demand doesn't do anything. That doesn't change at all. So if we, I mean, we get billed from WAPA for a certain amount of demand every month, whether we use it or not.
Right.
Even if you have a double or not, it's still the same.
Yeah. So that, that makes no difference whatsoever, the wind generator, the wind generator.
Still based on your peak numbers.
Makes no difference whatsoever when we get billed.
Just a flat.
None at all.
It's just flat all the way across.
That never changes.
See, it used to be they billed us under.
And that's, that's the assumption, that, that's the assumption that everybody had, but that's not right.
That's what it used to be.
What, demand?
Yeah.
Because we were getting charged for, cause we are getting charged for demand. But it doesn't matter if we use less, we get charged less, no, we get charged the same amount.
They have to give us electricity whether we determine to turn or not, they have to make sure that.
Yeah, we're getting charged for demand.
Well, I understand that.
Absolutely.
I, I just don't know whether that thing's online or off, if it's messing with the demand, you're saying it's just a constant no matter what.
I'm saying that, I'm saying.
That's true, why are we measuring it then?
I'm saying that in January, we have a number, a demand number that we have to pay to WAPA. Of a thousand kilowatts, whether we make a thousand or whether we make fifteen hundred kilowatts. It doesn't make any difference. We pay that amount.
Say, why are we measuring it? What good is that data? They say it gets measured every day at three o'clock, why, why do we do that? That's how you. That's how you.
We don't, we don't use it.
They do.
They do.
They do.
They use it.
Yeah, so, aren't they basing that demand charge on that, or you're saying it's just a flat rate?
They may, they may base the, the dollar amount on it, but uh.
Don't they base the demand?
They don't base the, the unit amount on anything. That, that was based a long time ago, as far as I know, and that is what it is, and it's been that way for.
They, they, what they do.
Ever.
If I remember right, they, whatever that demand was, that's what, that's where our number's at. That, if, if we're demanding fifteen thousand kilowatts, that's where our demand is at, and that's what we get charged for. Whether we use twelve, whether we use eighteen, it don't make any difference, that's where they base our.
Road, Steve, uh, is our demand, our, our top peak is, is lower, will that bring us down?
Nope, nope.
Well, bring it down, see, I thought it would too, I, I think.
They used to, that used to be years and years and years ago, didn't it, Frankie?
Well, yeah, because therefore, we, we was looking at, we, we were looking, actually looking at a peak generator. So we wouldn't.
Peak shaving.
The peak shaver, yes.
That's something that you, that you hear all the time, and this is, this is part of the reason why Maine changed their rates. Because we asked the question, why, why do we wanna save any energy if we're getting charged for something that we're not using anyway? So then they decided, well, wait a minute here, you know, and we were one of the few who never got to our peak number, our demand number. Uh, and so, you know, they started looking at it, and that's when they decided to change. What they were doing, and so now we just get charged a charge from them every month, ten thousand, a hundred and thirty-one dollars.
You help us by, by complaining or talking to them that made some change?
I don't know if I did anything, but I think our complaining helped change the rates.
It, it re, it made them re, reevaluate the city of Wall Lake.
Well, that's what I was wondering, yeah, we talked about that before and.
And right now, right now, where, where we're at, but in the future. Since our electricity that we buy from them is going down, our flat charge, our rate charge, just a. Ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars, that's gonna continue to go down too, because our percentage of what we. Of the total mean sales is gonna go down. So that's gonna continue to go down for us as long as our purchases go down.
Will that, will that help us on the, the one cent you say that costs us for Mid-America to come in? Will that, will that bring that down too then? One cent, one, one cent, how do you wanna say that?
Yeah, it's one cent per kilowatt, that's transmission, it's uh, right here. Almost one point one cent per, per kilowatt hour.
And that's pretty, that's pretty high, cause it's.
That's pretty high.
We had the option to buy those three miles. And then we wouldn't have got charged that, but then we would have maintained those three miles. That's why we never did that.
Well, Maine is gonna help us out with that too, they're going through this right now with Rockford where, cause Rockford's. Uh, you know, we're getting charged a cent per kilowatt hour, and Rockford's probably getting charged too, Rockford, Iowa. So they're way out of whack, maybe even three cents, it's crazy what they're paying, they're paying fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars a month for transmission. And they're smaller than we are, about half the size of us.
It wouldn't cost, what's it cost, a hundred thousand dollars a mile, what's it cost to go out here?
Maine is gonna help us try to reroute our transmission and maybe, maybe help us out with that cost too. But that's something that is gonna take a little while, probably. But to get back to demand, so we, we kinda fully understand, we have a demand number. A unit number that we have to pay every month to WAPA. Okay, and we usually go over that number. Maine was filling in on that demand number, and we had a number that we had to hit with them too, and we never got to that. But we still had to pay it, so. We have to charge our customers for that because we're getting charged for it. That's why we take the readings, I don't know why they, I don't know what they do with the readings at three o'clock in the afternoon or whatever it is.
That's crazy, but that's what I do, okay.
Basically, what they're doing at three o'clock, they're, they're speculating what your, their next, they load might be.
I think it's, I think it has a lot more to do with buying and selling than it does anything else, Frankie, you're right. Yeah, cause that's a big deal too, I mean, if you buy a hundred thousand kilowatt hours and you need a hundred and one thousand, you get charged.
Off the rack, it's uh, what they call off the rack.
They got a guy from one of their Cedar Rapids that checks all these bills every time they get one. And they go out there and they paying that, this guy big, big money to make sure that they ain't get ripped off by Mid-America. And I don't know what it costs, but it's quite, it's, it's quite high, this guy goes through all the billing. From Mid-America and all, Lakeview does, and they hire this guy at Cedar Rapids to just to look over their bills and make sure that they ain't getting ripped off. I don't know if that, if it does them any good or not, I don't know.
Sounds like they bought some blue sky there.
Yeah, I, it looks to me like it's probably blue sky, but. I asked Scott one day, I says, well, we, we got somebody that just takes care of that and make sure that we're. We're not getting ripped off, and it, it's not cheap for them, it's just a pretty high price deal.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Moving second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Opposing, nay?